All right, well, today we're going to present the financial forecast for fiscal year 2024. This information has been shared with council in previous fiscal year via memo. But I felt it's important that you receive this report by us in person in a public setting so that the council can discuss among themselves what they're, how they want to proceed with respect to the budget. And this dialogue is going to be important for us and the financial staff so we can hear from council in terms of what your ideas are. This forecast includes the assumptions that will shape the development of this year's budget, and we wanted to start early, and it allows a thoughtful discussion for detailed conversations centered on critical policy issues that are necessary and part of the budget process. I want to recognize Ed Vanino, Carrie Lang, and the financial, and all the Financial Services Department for delivering this forecast to you and this information. They'll be the, I guess, the workhorses as we go forward with the adoption of the budget. We believe that we're presenting a forecast that prioritizes community affordability, and as you will see from our preliminary projections of tax rates, utility rates, and other fees, we try to be sensitive to that. My direction to the staff began with a conversation that we, that we begin this conversation with council with no new tax rate, and while still making appropriate investments in our staff, infrastructure, and essential public services. While it appears that it's attainable in fiscal year 24, it's important to keep in mind that making the appropriate investments on our, making the appropriate investments for our staff and infrastructure and essential public services, it's going to be meaning, meaning, you know, when you have bifocals at this age, you get, you lose your sight. Meaning that it's critical that we maintain the long-term fiscal discipline and for our long-term financial health as a city. A few increases you'll see in the utility rates are directly tied to infrastructure and investments that are needed to provide highest possible reliability and comply with regulatory requirements and impact on our utilities. Other assumptions that are important also include a 3% increase for city employees. At an early stage of this budget process, the increase should be viewed as a placeholder, and the staff will continue to evaluate the tight labor market and make actions to address citywide challenges with respect to staffing. We also have assumed to stay within budget for our public labor negotiations. We will be negotiating with labor, labor contracts for our three public safety departments, and the forecast includes assumptions about the long-term cost of these contracts. The city of Austin, like most employers, is also experiencing the rising cost of health insurance with projected 10% increase of city contributions for this fiscal, for the next fiscal year. And at this time, it's unknown whether that increase will be, will be necessary for employees in terms of premiums. The Human Resources Department is evaluating a series, a series of planned design changes that may mitigate the need for premium increases for our city employees. And finally, it is, it is not in the forecast, finally, what is not in the forecast is also equally important. This is a baseline forecast. Cost increases are projected based on current staffing levels and current service levels. Funding for new initiatives, program enhancements, staff increases will be viewed and considered as part of the budget development. The cost of these new items will be added to the budget and will be carefully evaluated against tax, the tax and fee increases needed to support those additions. This work will take place over the next two months, leading up to the presentation of the proposed budget, by, adoption of the proposed budget, leading up to the proposed budget on July the 19th. And so with that, we'll begin the process.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Proton, members of the council, Ed Vanino, Chief Financial Officer, and it is great to see you all in person. As the manager mentioned, we have done this financial forecast as a written report for the last several years. Prior to that, we were always in this room. Doing it in person, and it's good to be back. These are important topics. It really sets the foundation, the starting point for our entire budget process. So being able to do this live publicly and to get direct feedback from you, I think, is a really, really important thing. I do want to do a quick introductions. To my right is Budget Officer Carrie Lang. To her right is Division Chief Eric Nelson. I always like to introduce Eric as our revenue guru for the city. He is truly one of the revenue experts for the entire state of Texas. He's the only person I know who's been able to convince the state comptroller that their property tax calculation worksheets were incorrect and got them to change them. So he is a great asset to us in terms of what he brings with revenue knowledge and forecasting. I did want to start off, since it's been a little while, we have some new council members, and it's been a while since we've done this for all of our council members, I wanted to talk a little bit about what this forecast is intended to do. And very simply, it's just a projection of our expenditures and revenues over the next five years, and how do those things compare? Are they in balance? Are they in alignment? Or are they not? I always like to tell folks when we do our revenue projections and our expenditure projections for that matter, we want them to be reasonably conservative. We're not trying to be aggressive and be, you know, rose-colored glasses in terms of what the financial future looks like on revenues, but we're also not trying to be hyper-conservative where you don't get a real picture of what things might look like. So I think it's important for financial planning for us to be conservative, but not absurdly so reasonably conservative. This really is a starting point for our budget discussions, so I just want to drive that home. This is not the budget. This is not even a tip of the hand of what the budget's going to look like. This is just a starting point for the conversations, giving you that big picture 50,000 view of what are, what are the next five years potentially look like under a number of different revenue scenarios and our base budget projections for built-in cost drivers only. So when we get into the expenditure side, that's what you're going to see is for what we have in place right now, the rec centers we operate right now, the parks we have to maintain, the services we provide, the libraries we operate, there's a certain cost to that right now, and what do we project that cost to be into the future, taking into account wages, health insurance, retirement cost increases, but not, you know, an array of new initiatives. The new initiatives discussion looking, will be part of what we do between here and budget. We'll be looking at the different council resolutions and priorities that you've established, community input that we received. That'll all be part of crafting the city manager's budget proposal. All the presentations we're going through today have been posted to the agenda system. Once we get through today's events, there will be a written report. That written report that we've done for the last several years, you'll still get it. There's no new information in it, but it'll give you a narrative of what you're going to hear today, a written narrative of the same topics and the same messages you're going to hear today. So with that, let me jump in real quick to the agenda. And we do have a packed agenda. We're going to get through it in, in, in the two hours we've been allocated, but there are, is a lot to cover, and we certainly want to make sure there's time for discussion and questions. I'm going to start off with these first handful of slides, which is just be a look back. How do we end fiscal year 22 compared to how we thought we were going to end it? We have to make projections about how we're going to end fiscal year 22 when we're developing the fiscal year 23 budget. How do we do compared to those projections? And then the budget we're currently in, how are we currently trending compared to what our budget is? Are we doing better than what we thought or worse than what we thought? At that point, I'll turn it over to Carrie. She'll go through citywide cost drivers, our general fund forecast, both revenues and expenditures. She will talk about some of those council priorities, again, that at this point aren't incorporated into our forecast, but that's not to say that they won't ultimately be as we move forward to preparing our budget proposal. We do have short summaries for each of our enterprise, our major enterprise funds, and then for Austin Energy and Austin Water. We have invited them here today since they're such a large part of our budget to do short presentations on their financials. Austin Energy, Water, and the General Fund combined are about three-quarters of our total city budget, so that's why we wanted to at least focus a little bit more in-depth on those three funds. And then I'll talk a little bit at the end about our capital improvement program highlights. I do want to note that there's a presentation from John Hockenios, who's a local economist, does a great job taking, making, giving an economic outlook for the, for the nation and the city. His report is posted in backup. He's going to be here in a little bit. He had a conflict, but he'll be here by the time we're done talking if you have questions. I don't anticipate at this time we'll have time to see, hear his presentation because of the 11, 11 o'clock stop. But if we move through this quickly and you don't have a lot of questions for us, maybe we can get John up here and talk about our local economy and get questions from you all for him.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Please.
Where can we find this presentation? Was it emailed to us or is it in backup?
It's in the, in the backup for the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
There should be four. There's this one, there's one for Austin Energy, one for Austin Water, and one for John Hockenios. Yes, ma'am. Wanted to start with the end in mind, and so this is really just, this is the short version of what I think you're going to hear. General Fund Revenue Sources continue their recent strong performance in fiscal year 22 and 23, sales taxes. And for the first time in a long time, we're actually earning some interest, or our interest earnings are much higher than what we had anticipated as a result of that strong performance in fiscal year 22 and our current fiscal year. Staff is going to be recommending, this is the first time you hear, hearing it, but staff will be recommending to you all that we adjust our reserve policy to the Government Finance Officers Association industry standard of 60 days. That's about 16%. Our current policy is 14%. All of our other enterprises do it as a number of days, and the GFOA recommendation is 60 days. We'll talk a little bit more about why we think that's important later on. But as we look at the longer term, when we look out over five years, we do anticipate that longer-term fiscal challenges will continue as a result of our rising cost drivers and how that stacks up against the state-imposed 3.5% revenue cap. If you look at all of our expenditures all in, typically around 3.5% to 4% is what they grow just for that base cost driver scenario, right? Wages, health insurance, retirement, those types of things, inflationary cost increases for our contracts, typically around a 3% or 4% increase. So that can become a challenge to balance your budget against those base cost drivers when half of your revenue was capped at 3.5% and 25% of your revenue, which comes from the utilities and various fees we charge, typically grow less than that. It puts a lot of pressure on sales taxes to perform strongly in order to balance your base budget under those, under those constraints. So that continues to be a challenge. We've been telling this story. I was down at the legislature when SB2 was being passed, telling this story. We continue to tell this story. It's really been masked, though, the last several years because of the substantial federal stimulus dollars we've seen pumped into the city, pumped into our local economy, and the real strong sales tax growth we've had over the last couple of years has masked these challenges, but we continue to predict it's coming eventually when our sales taxes come down to more of historical norms. We are going to see challenges in the future to keep our budget in balance. Looking on to fiscal year 24, again, just want to highlight that it is a base forecast, and the manager set out direction to staff to see what would it look like if we tried to bring a base FY24 budget to council that was balanced at the effective tax rate, or at the very least with a very minimal tax rate. And so we've done that. You're going to see that in this forecast that we do project. We'll be able to bring a fiscal year 24 base budget to you that's balanced at the effective tax rate or very near to it. That'll be a starting point for how this body decides they might want to add to the budget to address various other priorities. And just one last time, service enhancements and new initiatives likely will. We do project to do some new things that council might want to do, probably will be looking at some degree of tax increase. All right, that's kind of the beginning with the end in mind, drilling down a little bit more on to our fiscal year 22. That's the last fiscal year. How did we end up? You know, the projections are always really important. When we're bringing the fiscal year 23 budget to council, a big part of it is how are we, how are we trending in FY22? Are we going to have some savings that can be floated, carried forward into FY23 to help balance our budget? This slide is talking about how do we do relative to that estimate. So you can see in terms of revenue, we ended fiscal year 22 17.3 million dollars above our estimate, largely coming from sales taxes, a federal grant that was a COVID reimbursement. Actually, that was a, that was a federal reimburse, that was a FEMA reimbursement related to COVID of $3 million that came in. And interest earnings, as I mentioned, were, are, were starting to go up last year. They're substantially higher this year. We also had a insurance settlement that was in our favor that we, that we had not anticipated. Flipping to the next slide, looking at how we did relative to expenditures. I think you went one too far, Carrie. On expenditures, our departments ended the year at 99.15% of their budget, and this is pretty typical, right? When you look at our big general fund budget, about $1.3 billion, we ended the year, and we typically end the year somewhere around 99% to 100% of that budget funded. So when you think about it, big picture, is there a lot of fluff and cushion in our budget? I generally say there's, there's not. It depends on how you define fluff and cushion, but just in terms of what the budgetary needs of our department are in order to operate that they currently are operating, they're coming in right about what we budget them. We don't leave them a lot of wiggle room, but, you know, we do leave them a little bit. So that actually was a little bit less saving. That was a little bit more expenditures than we expected, so that's a negative in terms of our bottom line, all in, including this adjustment to GAAP. GAAP stands for Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. Essentially, when, in the budget world, we work on one, on accounting standard, the budget basis. In our act for world, they work on an accrual basis. In order to keep those things, things synced up, we do this, this GAAP adjustment in order to, at the end of the year, we always have to do an adjustment to adjust for those timing differences between the accrual basis and the budget basis so that our fund summary stays in sync. Long story short, $25.9 million in total flowing into our reserves, more than what we had anticipated when we put the FY23 budget proposal together and council adopted it. Okay, now transitioning to this fiscal year, fiscal year 23, our general fund is 1.31 billion dollars in total revenue is projected. That's currently $32.7 million above our budgeted level. Similar stories, but even more so than what we saw in fiscal year 22. Sales taxes continuing to come in very strong and stronger than anticipated. I have to highlight, these aren't, these levels, they're not sustainable, right? We saw, I think, we got slides in here, but double-digit sales tax growth last year, currently tracking double-digit sales tax growth. We've not seen this kind of growth in, in our history, at least not during my history with the city, and those just aren't sustainable numbers, so we have to be cautionary about that. Interest earnings, I think less than a year ago, we were earning maybe 0.3% was the federal, was the treasury rate. Now we're at about 4.5%, so lots more interest earnings than what we could have anticipated when we put the budget together. 13.9 million additional revenue there. On the expenditure side, still pretty early, right? You know, we're about six months into the fiscal year when we're putting these numbers together. Our departments, again, are projecting that they are going to expend the vast majority of their allocated budgets. They're all projecting they'll stay within their budgets, but until they get a little bit further into the fiscal year, there is, there's a need to be conservative in regards to these estimates. But I do anticipate, this is just me talking, I anticipate by the time we get to the budget and by the time we close out the fiscal year, we'll see our departments, you know, coming in with more savings than what's reflected in that first bullet. You know, they'll probably end up around that 99.1, 99.2% expended, but it's a little early in the year for us to be making that determination, so we're being conservative here. As a result of that, 25 million to the good in FY22, and the fact that we're currently trending over $30 million to the good in fiscal year 23, staff is recommending that we take an opportunity to revisit our reserve policy and to increase that to the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association recommended 60 days. If we did that, we still are projecting we would end this year above even that policy level. We would end this year at 68 days. Just a little bit of advocacy for that reserve. Why is it important? Well, liquidity during an emergency, it's critically important. During, during the pandemic, when other cities maybe had cash flow issues and had to wait for those CARES Act and ARPA monies to come in before they could act, we were acting day one because we had very strong reserves that allowed us to, to do so, and then we were able to pay ourselves back as the federal money started flowing in. We have a memo that's going to be coming out sometime this week on winter storm Mara and staff's response to that, departmental responses to that. It's a similar situation. We're out there taking care of what needs to be taken care of because of the emergency, but it's going to be a year plus before we get those FEMA dollars back. So having those strong reserves gives us the, the ability to do that. Economic fluctuations is another reason we want reserves. One of our reserves is in fact called a budget stabilization reserve because a quarter of our revenue comes from sales taxes. Sales taxes go up fast and they come down fast, and so to address those fluctuations and to give us some stability, the reserves are, are an important consideration there. The last time we increased reserves, in fact, was when we were capped by the legislature at 3.5% instead of an 8% increase, because when we had an 8% tax increase, we had more latitude to adjust property taxes when sales taxes were down than we currently do. We've really lost that latitude under the 3.5% cap, so having a larger stabilization reserve helps us there. And then finally, our reserves are really important to our credit ratings. You're going to hear from Carrie later about some of the, some of the council priorities that are currently not included in the forecast, they're unfunded from a forecast perspective. Again, we will look at those as we move forward, but we wanted to talk and spend a little bit of time just about the FY23 budget you approved and just some of the priorities from council that were incorporated into that fiscal year 23 budget. Most significantly, a 33% increase in the living wage from $15 an hour to $20 an hour, additional funding for emergency rental assistance, funding for the Austin Civilian Conservation Corps, and et cetera. Just to say, we do get a lot of priorities coming forward from council, and we, we have and continue to look for ways to fund those priorities, and that these programs, at least to the extent these programs were ongoing in nature, that funding is flowing through into the fiscal year 24 forecast. You know, another one that comes to mind is, it's not on this list because it's older, but the Housing Trust Fund. We transfer more than $10 million a year from the Housing Trust Fund. That is a council initiative that was approved. That program is going to continue on, and again, we'll look for ways as we move forward with our budget process about how we might be able to fund other council priorities that are still out there. We'll move on to the timeline real quick, and I'm going to start off with all those days. It's just that, right, it's, it's a big budget and it takes a long time to develop it. We have this starting in January, but I know we started before that. We were actually in some work sessions with boards and commissions even in December. So we start off, this is a change we made several years ago, to put input from our advisory boards and commissions right at the very forefront of the budget process, and we actually pay special attention to our equity-based commissions centered around the Joint Inclusion Commission. So that happens all over, over January to March. We get that feedback. That will inform budget decisions as we move forward. We're here on May 2nd presenting you the financial forecast, which is really kind of the traditional kickoff starting point, at least for the dialogue between staff and council. The time before that is really us just working with the departments, sharpening our pencils, putting our numbers together, but this is our presentation to you of what the financial future is, is looking like. July and August are really busy. This is a little bit more compressed than what it used to be because with SB2, we made the decision that we wanted to start adopting the budget in mid-August instead of mid-September so that if this body decided they did want to do a tax rate election to fund various other initiatives, you have the timeframe under the election laws to do so. But then July and August do become pretty, pretty active on a budget perspective. You'll get the budget from the city manager on the 14th. That'll be the actual budget document. The written report will publish it. We will go around and do one-on-ones with you in advance of that, just so you're not surprised by anything you might see in that budget document. And then on the 19th, we'll be back probably in this room in this same setting to do staff presentations on the budget. Starting on July 26, but then continuing into August, we have multiple community input sessions, multiple budget work sessions for council to wrangle with the budget and provide feedback, and then we'll be in front of you August 16th, 17th, and 18th, if necessary. Doesn't have to go three days, but it could go three days for council to deliberate and ultimately approve the budget. I am going to now pass it on to Carrie Lang. That was all about the past and the current. Carrie's going to talk about what the future looks like.
Thanks, Ed, and thank you, council, for having us today. Again, I'm Carrie Lang. I'm the Budget Officer in the Financial Services Department, and I'm going to talk about some of the things that we're looking at, the assumptions that we made as we are building our forecast for the next five years. And we start with citywide cost drivers, things like health insurance. As we continue to see the rising costs in health insurance, we anticipate a projected 10% annual increase year-over-year for those costs. Wages, we're also looking at a 3% annual increase for wages, for, for employee wages over the next five years, and we continue to do market studies for our employees. And so in fiscal year 24, we're anticipating HR, our Human Resources Department completing a citywide market study. When we look at our employee retirement system, you know, we're assuming that the state legislator will, will approve the joint bill that we, we put forward, in front of them with the board to update our, our employee retirement system, and that is anticipated, our, our contribution to increase to 19.84%. And then again, with living wage, as Ed mentioned, we are keeping our cost drivers at level when we look at this forecast. So living wage in the forecast is, remains at $20 per hour. And then one thing that we did a little bit differently this year is that we really took a hard look at our long-term vacancies, and so any vacancy that we had that was two years or older, we were eliminated in fiscal year 24. We worked with departments to identify those positions and to work through that elimination process. In addition to that, if a department has a 15% or higher vacancy rate, they will not be getting new positions in fiscal year 24. We're asking departments to really look at their resources that they currently have and make those adjustments to address any, any service needs or program needs they, they have with their current resources or current vacant positions. Looking at some of the other cost drivers that we are anticipating, our internal services departments continue to work along with these base cost drivers, so we will see minimum increases for, for our internal services department. Support services, of course, that includes human resources, financial services, some of our smaller offices, the manager's office, things like that, that's a 3% increase. Our CTM department is again a 3% increase over the forecast period, and then fleet maintenance, maintenance is, we're showing a 5% increase for those costs. Fuel is showing a 10% increase for fiscal year 24, but then we're reducing that to 3% for the out years. So thinking about those overall cost drivers and looking at the general fund and the forecast in particular for the general fund, I want to start by talking about the general fund budget for fiscal year 23. As you know, or excuse me, the revenue for fiscal year 23, we have four major revenue sources for the general fund. Property tax revenue accounts for right under 50% of our revenue. It is one of my, our most stable revenue sources. Sales tax, as Ed mentioned, is the next largest, but is more volatile, and we have to really look at how that is impacted by the economy. And then utility transfers are transfers from our water and energy utility. We, that is 12.7% of our overall revenue. And then finally, other revenue, and we'll talk about these more in detail, include our revenue for services, our fees for services, charges for things like EMS transports, parks and recreation programs, our interest, things like that are included in our other revenue. So I'm going to start out talking a little bit more about our other revenue for the general fund. You'll see that, that revenue is very slow growing when you look over the next five years. We're looking at a 0.5% increase over the five-year forecast. It includes, as is listed there, I'm not going to name them all, but the interest income, our public health and safety licenses and inspections, any fines or fees that we have is included in our other revenue. This graph also mentions the CAGR. We tried to include all the definitions. That is just the annual compound growth that you'll see, and we'll talk about that over the next several slides in different iterations, but that's just showing how the, the revenue or the expenditures are growing year-over-year when we look at the trends that we're seeing. Our next discussion point is our utility transfers. Council approved the rates for our utility transfers. The energy transfer is 11.6% of their gross non-fuel revenue, and then water's transfer is 8.2% for their average growth revenue. This show, this chart right here is really showing the, the relevance and the, the portion of the general fund revenue that we've relied on for the utility transfers over the years. As you, as you can see, back in 2010, it was 20.7% of our total revenue. We reduced that reliance on the general, on the utility transfers over the years, but we are anticipating a slight increase over the forecast period, which is primarily due to their increased, or their projected increased rates, the recent rate that, that Austin Energy has just had, and their projections over the next five years for small increases to their utility rates. And then as we look at sales tax, we, we continue to talk about how sales tax fluctuates over time and in response to the economy. It is our second-largest revenue source. time and in response to the economy. It is our second-largest revenue source, but it is the most volatile, and you will see that as we look at this chart. When you see the pre-COVID annual growth, it is 5.9%. That orange part of this chart shows the fluctuation that we saw with the stimulus that we had and the distortions from COVID, from the shutdown to us then getting the stimulus dollars. We do anticipate that it will, our sales tax growth will go back to pre-COVID growth levels. And so that's why you see us going down to 7.7% in our estimate. And then as we look at the out-years, we're more conservative at the 4% because we want to make sure that we are not chasing the sales tax growth, that we are being really mindful of how that will impact us over the next several years. And then finally, when we talk about revenue, I want us to look at our property tax. As Ed said, we started this conversation looking at our no-new revenue rate, having the conversation of what would it look like for us to create a budget or create a forecast beginning at the no-new revenue rate. When we look at this, we see that the no-new revenue rate generates $594.9 million of revenue. We are anticipating that if we go with the voter approval rate, we would get the $628.3 million. Again, the sales revenue cap that we have implies that we can, it only applies to MNO, which is maintenance and operations property tax revenue. We still have to look at what our debt rates are and the rate that we have agreed to for the ATP, Austin Transportation Partnership, project for their rate for property taxes. One thing that this really, we wanted to really hone in on this slide, is the impact of the tax bill, the projected tax bill based on these different rates. I will note that we noticed that there is a change in the senior exemption, and we are anticipating, as we continue to look at the impacts of our projected or our proposed rates, we're anticipating coming back to council probably in June to respond to the IFC that we received this past fall, to look at our homestead exemption for our seniors and disabled, to make sure we make adjustments to that, to hold them harmonious as we look at the different potential tax rates going forward. So this slide here really looks at those different revenue projections based on the different tax rate possibilities that we are considering. If you'll notice, the no-new revenue rate, keeping that at the no-new revenue rate for the forecast period results in a very flat revenue growth for the city, for the general fund. And then the second part, the second scenario, looks at the no-new revenue rate in fiscal year 24, and then returning to the voter-approved rate in subsequent years. And then finally, looking at the voter-approved rate for all five years of the forecast period. And a little bit later, we'll see how this revenue scenario compares to the projected expenses that we are anticipating over the forecast period.
I want to make sure, if I've been a voter-approved rate, it's different than the no-new revenue rate right now. It's what you could go to.
I thought I'd punch that button.
Let me be clear. It's voter approval rate. And so I may be talking a little bit too fast, but it's voter approval rate, not a rate that the voters have already approved.
So if the 3.5%, what SB2 did was it said if you go above 3.5%, there's an automatic election, and voters can approve that.
Correct.
And that's the rate you're referring to when you're talking about the comparisons?
No, I'm referring to the voter approval rate, the 3.5% cap.
So not above it, but 3.5% is the highest you can go, but that, without an election is what you're saying?
Correct. It used to be called the rollback rate.
Right.
And now the new name for it is voter approval rate.
We're trying to use the new words.
Right.
But I want to make sure when you say, you're saying voter approval, not voter approved, as though there's already been an amount that's approved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kerry, I wonder if you and Ed could also indicate that if you did adopt the budget at the no-new revenue rate, there's a period of time in which the council could make adjustments to the tax rate in future years that would capture, recapture some of that that you didn't take in the fiscal year that you adopted the budget.
That is absolutely correct. We have up to three years to go back and use those dollars that we did not, if we go to the effective rate, then we have three years to recapture those dollars that we did not receive in that year that we went to the effective rate. Or the no-new revenue rate.
Mayor, just to be clear about that, so if we did a no-new revenue rate this year, let's say next year, we could do 5%? Or is that how it's like 3 and 1/2% accumulates over the three years so that the city has wiggle room within those three years to capture some of the revenue that it may be left on the table?
Correct, without going to voter approval.
Thank you.
If I could just add really quick, it's not all or nothing either. You know, it's not like we have to go to the effective when we get to bank that 3 and 1/2. If we approve a budget at 2 and 1/2, we get to bank that 1% to use in the next three years if we need to do.
So as we transition to our expenditures for the general fund, public safety continues for fiscal year 23 to be our largest expenditures for the general fund. That's police, fire, EMS, and our forensic science. They're about 63% of the general fund. And then our community services departments are 29%. That's our parks and recreations, libraries, public health, our municipal court, housing, and animal services. So when we think about the cost drivers that we mentioned earlier, the citywide cost drivers, our corporate cost drivers, this slide really talks about and shows the impact of those cost drivers to the general fund. So when you see salary and benefit increases, that $47 million, that includes, and is noted on the slide, all wage increases, potential increases to the pension, as well as anticipated costs related to the labor negotiations with the public safety associations. And then the police vehicles and equipment, I do want to point out that that is us transitioning back to cash funding these short-term replacement vehicles and equipment. So when we think about what we've done over the past few years, we moved that to debt, and we're proposing moving that to cash funded because of the life cycle of these vehicles and the equipment. It makes more sense to not have the short-term debt costs for those life cycles. And then when you think about the support services, fuel and fleet maintenance that I mentioned earlier, that's 7.6%. And also includes the opening of the Goodnight Ranch Station, the opening of the Dove Springs Public Health Facility, and the operations of South Bridge Shelter. I will say that there are a few things that are included in the out-years that are enhancements, are already approved enhancements from council. That is the opening of Canyon Creek, and then the $22.8 million for the police sworn employment or positions to be included into the budget in the out-years. And that was part of the police staffing plan that was discussed several years ago and approved by council in conversations. And then finally, the implementation of the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, recommended general fund reserves. We do have that beginning in fiscal year 24. So this is just the overview of our expenditures over the next five years, talking about all those cost drivers and increases, and what these base cost drivers will do to the general fund budget expenditures over the next five years. We see that 3.8% growth that we're anticipating, and this does not include any enhanced programs as we discussed a little bit earlier. When we compare, when we compare those expenses to the revenue, we see that at the no-new revenue rate, that does end up with a very large deficit for fiscal year by the time we get to fiscal year 28. When we look at the, going to the voter approval rate in fiscal year, oh, excuse me, going to the no-new revenue rate in fiscal year 24, and then transitioning to the voter approval rate in the out-years, that still results in a $37.2 million deficit. If we go to the voter approval rate in fiscal year 24, we get about $30 million in surplus in fiscal year 24, but by the time you get to fiscal year 28, we're looking at a balanced budget. And so what this really shows is how the different rate scenarios show themselves once we get through the forecast period, either $30 million surplus now with the voter approval rate, or going with the second scenario and having a deficit in fiscal year 28.
Mayor, so essentially, if I'm understanding this chart correctly, we have to have revenue come in at that voter approval rate to match expenditures over the five-year forecast?
Yes, that is our staff, in looking at this, we recognize that if we don't go to the voter approval rate, we are anticipating a deficit. Now, when we look out into the out-years, of course, there are so many variables that can change that, but with the information that we have today, we do anticipate a deficit in fiscal year 28. Again, there are things that we can do to make adjustments to try to address that deficit before we get to that point, and staff will do everything we can to make that adjustment, but this is what our revenue and expenditures are showing at the moment.
And councilmember, and with the refrain of Noisy Nettle, what you would be forced to do is have fiscal discipline, sharpen your pencil, figure out a way to deliver those services within the resources. If we don't ever challenge ourselves, I promise you, we'll allow the expenditure side to just grow at whatever rate, so we can kind of keep those things in balance. Part of this is to make sure that we've got the wherewithal to sharpen our pencils, actually manage to the expenses that are required, that would be delivered under the no-new revenue rate, so that we can be what we're paid to do. It's to make sure that we have our house in order.
And I will say that even with the surplus that we are anticipating at the voter approval rate, the recommendation would be to, if that was the choice, to do only one time because any new services that we add that are ongoing services will only increase that deficit in the out-years.
So essentially, that revenue cap, the 3.5%, that is our expenditure growth. I mean, in terms of inflation, in terms of just kind of the additional costs, we can capture 3 and 1/2% additional revenue per year, but in that prior slide, you're saying that expenditures are going to grow at about 3.8%. So I'm aware, even if we're maxing out our revenue, we're looking at a long-term stability, really, not any kind of additional services, as you're mentioning.
Councilmember Fuentes, and then Councilmember Ryan Alter.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for sharing with us this information. And I think, city manager, to get to what you're speaking to, if we know that our staff is recommending and building out a forecast that assumes a 3.5% increase, to me, having this, for us to consider a budget with a base proposal of assuming no new increase is misleading. You know, we have to ensure the stability of our city, and while, yes, I think we would all love to say we did not increase the tax rate on new buildings, and that would be great for political purposes, I don't think that would be in the best interests of financial management of the city, and also weighing the continued labor shortages that we see within our departments and what we're hearing from our city departments. And so I know that this is the beginning of many conversations that we will have as a council, but I do want to just, you know, add that lens, is that we are receiving a presentation that is saying that we need a 3.5% increase as part of our financial forecast for the next five years, or we're looking at a deficit of over $35 million.
All I would say, as a former department head, I always wanted more money. And if I didn't get challenged, I would budget at a higher level, whether I needed it or not. And the job of management is to have a forcing mechanism to evaluate whether those expenditure requirements are real. And I don't think we've had that exercise in a long time in this organization, so we want to do that. And yes, we're trying to show what happens if you were to, in every subsequent year, keep it at no-new revenue, to see what those deficits are. So this isn't, we're not trying to play any kind of smoke and mirrors here. We realize that there are issues that we're going to need in the out-years, no matter. And so, but it is to how you start this year, so that when we do add, if we were to add, how can we be the most prudent, and how can we ensure we challenge the departments to have the fiscal discipline necessary? Just, you know, we budgeted, we swept the 24, you know, positions that had been vacant for 24 months. Those were ostensibly positions that everybody needed. For two years, they weren't filled. So that leads me to believe that there's some flexibility there. And that's all we're trying to do, is challenge the departments to ensure that we get rid of some of that flex, so we have real needs for the departments.
Councilmember Ryan Alter.
To your point earlier about the carry of any unused cap, if you went 0% 0% in year three, whatever increase you do use, does that start counting against year one, and essentially you bank then year three going forward, or, you see what I'm saying?
It's like a rolling bank, so whenever you bank the percent cap, it's three years before it expires. And so that first cap, if we, you know, for fiscal year 24, it would expire in '27. If you're below in fiscal year '25, that bank would expire in fiscal year '28.
Got it. So what I'm trying to think, if we kept it at zero this year, and then in year two, we went up 3 and 1/2%, essentially, can we carry that 3 and 1/2% for more than three years if you, because you're always counting for the year prior? So in year two, we're using year one. In year three, we're using year two. In year four, you know, see what I'm saying?
I don't think it, I don't, the calculations don't work that way. So if you use that, if you use any, if you use a portion of that bank and it puts you above the 3 and 1/2%, then you wouldn't bank anything in the second year.
But if you're in year one, you're zero, and then in year two, you go up 3 and 1/2%. Did you use year zero's 3 and 1/2%? Or did you, I mean, year one's 3 and 1/2%?
No.
Or year two's 3 and 1/2%?
No, you're bank at that point, and that would be, your bank would now be at 7%.
Okay. So to this graph, then...
I'm sorry, no, it'd still be at 3 and 1/2%. If you went up to year 3 and 1/2, yes, yes.
Then we could, you know, the choice of either doing nothing or doing everything, if we didn't want to carry this surplus because we knew in year five we need it all, there is a way to carry enough cushion throughout so that by year five, we would have the ability to go up and meet the need, but not always having four years of surplus?
We do have flexibility in doing that.
And we're assuming 3% wage growth annually?
Councilmember Poole.
And then just to add on to what Councilmember Ryan Alter was saying, that you had already discussed the importance of ensuring that that would be one-time-only type spending. So if you were looking to bank something, if you knew that two years out, you needed to have a large expenditure, that would need to be something that is not a continuous expenditure, which is something to keep in mind.
And that's something we've done. I mentioned earlier that the federal stimulus has been a big part of why we haven't been bit by this cap yet, and the strong sales tax collections that are another reason. But we have used that strategy that Councilmember Poole just talked about for the last three years, where we're seeing a similar dynamic to this. There is some flexibility in the first year, but not long-term. We'll allocate some of that additional revenue to one-time things, not ongoing, because anything that increases the size of the purple bars just increases the gap in future years.
Please go ahead. Councilmember Allison Alter.
So I don't know if this is the time you want to do, but before we get to enterprise ones, I do have some questions for what you're saying is already in the base cost drivers. So one of the things, colleagues, that I've noticed over the last few years, and I've started talking with the budget officer and the city manager about, is we plan for the O and M for our fire stations when we build the fire station. We do not plan for the O and M for our park system when we add capital improvements to our park system. So when we added the Lovely Park over Elias Children's Garden, we didn't add any maintenance positions to maintain it. There's something that is off in the way that we are doing our planning for the Parks Department with the O and M. Department with the O and M, given the capital. I don't see those increases on here, they haven't been in there for several years. We see the impact of the lack of maintenance on our parks at the same time that we have over-usage. So I would really ask that we take another look at that and see how we are handling those O and M needs that come with the capital investments that we're making, whether it's from our bond funds or from our pre-land dedication funds, because every year, we keep getting asked for these additional maintenance. In the last few years, that those maintenance additional monies have gone to the cemeteries, not to the parks, where our families and our children are playing. And not that we don't need to maintain our cemeteries, but we are actually pulling maintenance people from our parks and putting them into our cemeteries, and not adding them to our parks and these new investments. So I want us to be sure that we're looking at that, and that as we're calculating things, we're including that. We've had some discussions about fire and EMS over the years, and the need to add more positions, whether or not they're with stations. Those are also part of the staffing memo, not seeing those reflected here, other than the new fire stations. You know, one of the things that was brought up, when Councilmember Kelly brought forward the latter, was, you know, that there's a need for other firefighters. We had a discussion the other day at Otten Finance about overtime. We are now seeing twenty-one million dollars of overtime for our fire department, and in theory, you would say that was a vacancy function, but we, back in 2017, we had, you know, slightly less overtime at that point in time, and we had double the vacancies we have now with fewer stations. We were able to bring that down to thirteen million through fixing the vacancies and short-term things that we did, but we may be better off hiring new firefighters than we are paying overtime, and we really, really need to look at that. It has a toll, as we've been talking about, for the police department on the fire department. Similar things can be said for EMS. We have also, you know, I don't know what the overtime levels are for EMS, but we have again and again seen the need for additional staffing there, and I would like to see and understand how that's playing out in the budget. Going back to the overtime, those overtime expenditures, we really need to look at how we are managing that overtime. And I understand that there's ballooning numbers for police, but we need a better handle on what is from the vacancies, and so that there's the vacancy money that's offsetting that, versus what is just the budget, you know, going up and up. And I do have some very serious questions that remain for fire, in particular, having known that history and looking where those vacancies levels are. And we need to get that staffing right, and we can bring that, bring that money down. Also want to know for the fees, one of the things that this council did that I don't necessarily see on here, was we indicated that we were willing to raise the fees on the ambulances. We had a cost-of-service study that allows us to do that, but we wanted to reinvest that money into EMS. That still has not happened. We also have been improving the revenue management. That is not fully fixed yet, and that money also needs to go into EMS by our direction, and that should be reflected in the budget and in our, in our policies. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. We have definitely taken note of your discussion points and concerns, and as we are working through to the budget portion of this process, we'll make sure we're looking at those things as we move forward. To go along with that, you know, we talk about the forecast being a base forecast, and as we look at the number of IFCs that we've received from council to date, we looked, we went back to May of 2022, we've received about thirty-four, or we've just received thirty-four council resolutions to, that we have to look at to address, you know, potential impacts to these, to the base budget. And so this is just a list of some of the things that are included. Of course, things like living wage continue to be a part of the conversation, the fire apparatus and reserve fleet, as well as the positions to go with that. So there are several things that we are continuing to, to review and look at the impact, the financial impacts to determine, as we're looking at that, as well as the long-term structure of our financial out-forecast period. How do we manage those things within the budget?
The compression, has compression, based on the, our increase of the minimum, the living wage to twenty dollars, has all the compression been factored into the budget, or are we still raising, you know, other salaries in response to them?
So we did address the compression in late December, early January. Staff received increases that were impacted by the increase of the living wage. I think it's something that we continue to look at and analyze as we get through this fiscal year, but at this point, based on the analysis from HRD and the, and the implementation that was done in December, January, I think we are set for the compression related to going up to twenty dollars in fiscal year twenty-three.
And again, just for background, I know we've got some new council members and stuff too, and for the public, could you explain the compression, what it is, and the challenges?
I'll do my best, as a non-HR professional. I, so when we increased our living wage to twenty dollars, there were the employees who were making about that amount, and when you look at that management ratio of how much the managers for those employees, as well as pay grades that are around that level, the HRD had to do an analysis to address how that twenty-dollar increase impacted those other employee and pay grades, to make sure that we addressed that reduced revenue, or reduced, hmm.
Delta, the delta between those positions became, became narrower. And so somebody with more responsibility was virtually getting paid the same as somebody who just got hired. And so we, so those were adjustments were made in this, this last, toward the end of last year. I think when, when HR made this presentation to us, they said, as, as we continue to move up, because it's, the twenty isn't, the resolution was to take it even higher, and as you go to that higher level, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's going to become more acute, and we're going to have to figure out a solution for that, because then you've got, you're pumping up against supervision, et cetera. And we, and we haven't adjusted, as I understand it, the pay scales used to get adjusted, but we, we've not, not, not done that in the traditional sense, when those first were created. It's been, they're more static, and you move down, but you really don't move up. And so we've got to, HR says we've got some work to do to achieve that.
Okay, so there still may be further kind of compression adjustments.
If you continue to, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, because I have a question related, because the, you have the living wage resolution, they are listed as items that are not included in the base budget, financial forecast. The resolution had it at twenty-two dollars, so is that, is this, is that the portion that's not factored in?
Correct. So the twenty dollars is ongoing, and so that is included in our base cost drivers, but any increases beyond that twenty dollars is not included currently in our, in our cost drivers.
Okay. But we are, we are covered with the twenty-dollar living wage increase, including compression?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan Alter.
Can I go back to some of the revenue in terms of how we are factoring in new construction, what our projected growth there is? Is that pretty steady, or how are we looking at the new construction piece that's outside the three-and-a-half percent?
We have the initial notice data from Travis County and Williamson, and actually, new constructions projected to be about two-point-six billion dollars for this tax year, which is the lowest it's been since FY fifteen. So we've seen a steep drop-off. Just a couple of years ago, we were up above, I think we were at four-and-a-quarter billion, and then four billion, and we faded off to in the threes last year, but yeah, now we're down at, at two-point-six, and we forecasted it to be about two-point-five, two-point-four over the remainder of the forecast period.
For all five years?
Well, not the exact number, but that level on average. So if, if we see a renewed boom, then obviously that would help the numbers you see here. We're at kind of a more sustainable, typical level, I think, because the numbers we've seen in the past few years are atypical, and, you know, I think we're being reasonably conservative to echo Ed's language, especially if you get a, get a chance to hear what Mr. Hockenius has to say about, about the prospects for the economy.
So if we were to craft policies to create more, more construction, more housing, we might see a little more in terms of that revenue?
Yeah, additional, you know, that new construction taxation is free money under the three-and-a-half percent cap.
And in terms, going back to the Councilmember Fuentes' question, while we are not raising the twenty dollars, the three percent annual increase after five years gets us to twenty-two and a half. So do we index that twenty dollars for our three percent? And, well, and, okay. What, I guess I don't, is there a formal policy, because I know some of it applies to contracts as well, so in year, or, you know, next year, for this, this base budget with the three percent, are we now saying that our living wage is twenty dollars and sixty cents? Or are we just going to keep that twenty static for the piece outside of our employees?
So right now, the, the living wage would be static outside our employees, so we would have to make an adjustment to the official living wage to show that increase to, when it's, when you talk about the impact to contracts and contracted employees.
And do you have, have you calculated, if we were in this budget, to go to twenty-two, what that cost would be?
We are working on those calculations to prepare for the proposed budget, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Poole.
Two items, just to comment on what we discovered last summer, when we were looking at trying to get to the twenty-dollar as the minimum wage for City of Austin employees. When it was set previously at fifteen, we didn't, in fact, specify that we wanted it to index, so the, like, the two-and-a-half, or the two, or the three percent annual increases that people received didn't necessarily move to the entry-level wages, and that was an item that we talked about pretty specifically during budget last year, to ensure, and I think that's what Ms. Lang was just talking about, while the contractor rate will stay at the twenty unless we take action to increase that, the entry rate will be indexed to increase over time. Right. And then the other thing, I just wanted to comment on, the idea about, which we see in, in fact, at play, of all of the new construction that's happening in our, some call it a boomtown, has driven council policy in the past, and has put us at the level of a budget and expenditures and expectations that you see in front of you. I will admit to all along being a little bit concerned about the pace and the rate of change and the increases in our budget, although this is my ninth budget with the city, and I've always been pretty relieved to see that Ed and his fine staff, and Elaine before him, have brought back balanced budgets without significant pain. I've never had to preside over cuts, which is an unusual circumstance, I think. Mayor, you may have been in a situation where you had to preside over cuts, and certainly the City Manager, but it's not any easier to govern when your budgets are growing, because the gap between people who have and people do not have is even wider, and our responsibilities to, to act within that and to address it are even greater. So I think, frankly, our burden in a boomtown, if I can call us that, is even greater than it might otherwise be. So just bear in mind that while there is, I think, a healthy falling off of the activity in our community, I, I don't see it dropping down to any kind of recession level. And I do think that the policies that we have promulgated, over the ones that I've been involved in over the last almost nine years, have indeed supported the necessary and the careful expansion, although I do think we went a little bit far in some instances that gave rise to some concerns, as I mentioned, but that in the end, things kind of rocked along, and we were okay. I don't know how long that will last. It could be that there is some, some kind of a falloff cliff in the future, but I don't necessarily see it in this forecast. I have seen forecasts very like this in the past, although the two-point, what is it, two-hundred-nineteen-million-dollar gap in year five is a little bit higher than what I remember seeing in the past. But we are in very good hands with our Financial Services Office, one of the best in, in the City of Austin, if I may, and, and it's pretty clear in these numbers that you're seeing here today and the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
How much more do you have in your presentation? Because obviously, we've got a council that's ready to start asking questions, so I want to try to manage the time here.
We still have to go through the enterprise departments, as well as the utilities, Austin Energy and Austin Water.
I have a clarification question from that conversation, if I might. So are you saying that this coming year, the living wage for lifeguards will go up to twenty dollars and sixty cents? Or are you saying that if somebody who got twenty dollars this year, next year will get twenty dollars and sixty cents, and that lifeguard, that new lifeguard will still just get twenty dollars?
So for sure, the second one, if your current lifeguard, twenty dollars, you're going to go up to twenty dollars and sixty cents. The manager talked about how HR has been managing the pay scales over time and adjusting them or not adjusting them, and so that conversation about how we manage those pay scales over time works, because we can't just increase the twenty-dollar-an-hour jobs, that then creates the compression that Councilmember Vela was talking about. So we're under that discussion right now about, with HR, about how they're going to manage the pay scales moving forward, but it needs to be done in a consistent, consistent manner.
Okay, so I still don't understand, though, whether, I mean, the problem we had with the fifteen dollars is that it never indexed up, so it never, it never grew. And I'm still not understanding whether the living wage, which would be the starting wage, would be.
Let me see, and then you guys correct me wrong, because this is, I'm using history, but, but, so I haven't managed a HR system for a while. If you're an employee of the City of Austin permanent, you're getting an increase. If you're a contract employee, that is, we, we hire you as temporary to work in the Convention Center, or temporary to work in any other of our, of our departments, my sense is that you, we pay the living wage, which is twenty. The policy that asked us to move the living wage up to affect, to affect contract employees as well as permanent employees, that's what HR's sorting through for subsequent years. This year, this forecast has it at twenty, for permanent employees, it'll be, because it's three percent, twenty, twenty and sixty cents. So that's an issue that we haven't completely figured out how to bake into the system as you go into the fourth, the third, the fourth, and fifth year. So that's work that we still have to do. And so I, we don't want to give you an incorrect picture. Give us time to come back and give you the correct picture, so that it's as accurate as we know at that point.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think we will want to better understand that, because that was part of, that, the lack of planning with respect to that, with the fifteen-dollar, left us in the, with the need to increase it substantially last year, then, and also the need for increased wages with inflation, but I think we, we had hoped to be avoiding that problem in the future. And I understand there's some details that need to be figured out, and I understand that you don't have those today. I just want to be clear that the intention was for that living wage to increase.
Automatic index.
I'm not sure that all the details of how you got there were figured out in that process, and so I wanted to get clarity on what was in the base versus what was going on.
Thank you, and I, just thank you, Mayor, I just have a quick comment. That was the intention, as Councilmember Alter shared, was to have the automatic index for the increase, and I believe my team is pulling our budget writer, but Manager wanted to flag for you, the budget writer that we passed as part of the budget process last year included some supplemental direction, which I thought was inclusive of the automatic indexing, but we're going back to verify and to check. So I just wanted to flag that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Poole.
Yeah, and just to close this loop, compression was the issue that I brought to the budget discussion last year in a really big way, to make sure that it was included. That's why we had additional money in order to address raising the salaries, which were, it sounds like HRD completed in December and January, and the intent, as some of my colleagues have mentioned here, and as, as I stated, was for people who are employees, that twenty dollars would go up by the amount that's indexed, and for people who are employees, that $20 would go up by the amount that's indexed, and that would be the new increase, that would be the new entry wage for people coming to work for the city. Again, not the contractors, we didn't address that. I recognize that's that is tricky, and I appreciate that the staff is looking at that and working through it because I think it's a it's an important, it's an important piece so we don't fall so far behind, which was the issue that Councilmember Fuentes led on during budget last year to try to address. Thanks.
Thank you.
As quickly as possible, let's talk about enterprise fund highlights. This is just a list of our enterprise departments. I'll go through each of them quickly as we talk about our forecast scenarios. Of course, they did, they did have to look at our citywide cost drivers. One thing that we did differently this year with our enterprise departments is that we had them focus on what it would look like at no rate increases for their for their rates and fees, as well as what a baseline increase looks like as well. And then finally, what perspective service enhancement. So we had them create three scenarios, or see that detail in the reports, to drive out what their forecasts look like. So we'll start with Austin Code. For the fiscal year financial forecast, they are looking at just a baseline increase over the forecast period. They are not anticipating at this time any increases to their portion to the clean community fee. They are actually seeing a net increase of $600,000 for fiscal year '24 because they did see some reductions in contracts based on utilization and and of course, the overall increases that I mentioned for the citywide employee benefits, things like that. Austin Convention Center similarly only has a baseline increase when we look at the forecast period. They do anticipate $5.3 million in additional costs in their fiscal year '24. But in fiscal year '25, they will have modified services due to the expansion of the Convention Center. And so you'll see that when you go into the report, they have very little changes over the over the forecast period. This reflects their hot collections, their hotel occupancy occupancy tax collections, which accounts for 60% of the revenue for the Convention Center. Then we look at the Austin Resource Recovery. Their baseline really shows a $3.1 million increase for cost drivers and to begin replenishing their fund balance. As as you all know, they were impacted in in Winter Storm Maura response. And so this baseline forecast really looks at those, making sure that 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 fund balance gets back to their 30-day reserve policy that they have. And then they do have 16 new positions in their baseline. That is based on the changes that they're seeing in some of the development areas where they are, they have to go back to smaller trucks that have two-person staffing on those trucks versus one, one-person staffing. And so that's what that baseline increase is to address those changes and customer levels and and how they have to provide those services. Their prospective increases does show 45 positions over the course of the forecast period and increases over the to their portion of the clean community fee as well as their rates to address those increases.
Does this include the FEMA reimbursement, assuming that we get it?
So this forecast does include and will, I think Ed mentioned, we're talking through and working through a memo to you all to see how we are going to address, but it will include some reimbursement as from FEMA, but it's anticipated later in the in the forecast period. Usually FEMA reimbursements take a minimum of two years. Our Heesum staff indicated that we still have some Heesum, some FEMA reimbursement from 2013 floods. So we we are very careful in how we project those reimbursements coming from FEMA. And so then, if we go forward to the Aviation Department, their baseline does include $50.6 million of increases. They're really looking at the anticipated depletion of their pandemic relief funds. And so they are trying to get funds back in. They're looking at addressing that by reinvesting those funds from from their coffer, but they aren't anticipating any new any new positions in the baseline. In their enhancements, they do project 80 new positions. They are looking really closely at their current vacancies and will make those adjustments based on how well they're they address those vacancies in fiscal year '24 before they look at adding those 80 positions. But most of their enhancements looks at looks supports the expansion as well as making sure that they are increasing their equipment and their their ability to respond to the growth at the at the airport. Again, Development Services, when we look at their projections for forecast, it is baseline. They do annually look at their cost of service model to determine their fees for Development Services. And so that will continue through the forecast period, and they'll make those adjustments to their fees based on that. All of their increases that are, all of their changes that you'll see is based on the cost drivers that I mentioned earlier, but also to note that $3.8 million removal of their reserve repayment to the general fund, that that is not continuing in fiscal year '24. They they've done their due diligence and have reimbursed the general fund, and so they see that savings in their fund at this moment. And then let's go forward to Transportation and Public Works. That combined department is showing a net $300,000 increase. They aren't anticipating a increase in the transportation user fee at the baseline level. They are anticipating, when we look at enhancements over the entire forecast period, they are asking for 168 positions over those five years to do various service levels of providing various service levels, including project delivery, including maintaining the sidewalks and the right-of-way and bridge maintenance. So those are some of the things that they are having discussions about when we look at their enhancement for the forecast period. And watershed protection as well, they are anticipating a decrease for from fiscal year '23 when we look at next fiscal year. They are anticipating, and this is at their baseline forecast, they're anticipating a reduction in their transfers, which includes their CIP transfer. They aren't anticipating a DUF increase, drainage utility fee increase. Again, with the enhancements, they do, they are asking for 41 new positions as enhanced services or expanding services, and that would include a 99 cent increase in fiscal year '24 to the drainage utility fee. I think one thing that we want to continue to have the conversation about is, as we're looking at the total impact to the typical rate payer, we look at, of course, their property tax bill, but also their fees for services and their rates. And this slide talks about that, what that looks like if we do a baseline increase, which is about $45.36 per month for that baseline increase or annual increase, and then $107 increase if they do the enhancements, if if all the enhancements of fiscal year '24 are accepted. That's 3.5% higher at that enhancement rate for the typical rate payer and fees. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Ed to give you just a brief highlight over our capital improvement program.
So real quick time check, we have 40 minutes left. We're going to get you there done by 11:00 AM as promised and directed. I'm going to go through the CIP slides real, real quick because we went through all these slides in much more detail and additional slides at the April 26 Audit Finance. I anticipate water and energy, they have short presentations, they'll each take maybe 10 minutes plus whatever questions you have. And I really would like to get John up here at least a little bit to talk about some of what he's seeing in the in the in the economic world. Let's go. So really, this is an exciting time for our CIP program. You can see from '22 back, you know, generally, maybe on average, about a billion dollars a year of capital improvement spending. That's over and above the $5 billion operating budget that Carrie and I have been talking about. Looking ahead, it's well beyond that. It's a billion and a half, all the way up to $2 billion of planned capital spending. So really, an unprecedented time for our CIP program. You see the big growth in those green pieces of the chart? That's airport, right? A lot of expansion work underway at the airport, but even more planning work underway and bigger plans in the future to try to keep our airport up with the incredible growth in passenger traffic they've seen. You also see up at the very top that not that that other section, that includes all of our non-voter-approved debt or self-supported debt, cash-funded projects, our watershed department funds a lot of their drainage projects with cash, that's all in there. But you also see those those brownish bars at the top growing, that's the Convention Center expansion, the planned Convention Center expansion, we'd start issuing debt for that and or start, you know, really getting going on the construction in fiscal years '26 and '27. So on the next slide, this is looking now, that the first slide was everything, revenue bonds, enterprise departments, voter-approved public improvement bonds, everything. This is just looking at the history of our voter-approved bonds. The purplish-colored bars are our comprehensive program, which we have traditionally and by financial policy, we try to schedule those comprehensive programs every six years. And we have, 2006, 2012, and 2018. The only thing unusual about 2018 is how large it was. You know, it was, 2018 bond program was more than the comprehensive bond program was more than the 2006 and '12 programs combined. All the orange-colored bars are showing you the kind of the one-off elections or for for infrastructure-specific, these are either transportation or housing, single proposition elections. And and we've had a lot of those, 2010, '13, '16, '20, and '22. We've had a lot of off-cycle bond elections, and the end result of that is a backlog of capital spending that is going to take us some time to get through. That first slide plus this slide combined is what's led to the city manager announcing the creation of a dedicated capital delivery department. This isn't new staff, but this is rearranging, reorganizing our capital delivery functions into a a new standalone department that's going to be singularly focused on getting through this program, this unprecedented program in the time timeframes that we can. And then on the last, is that the last one? Yeah. So this is just taking a look at each bond program, how much has been expended to date, how much has been encumbered, and how much is remaining to be expended. The green is the remaining to be expended, and no surprise that it's the more more current programs that have a lot of money still to be worked through. In total, when you look at just for our general obligation bonds, we currently have 1.8 billion of authorized but unissued general obligation bonds. It is going to take us time to work through that, thus the capital delivery department. We also have to be careful about how we manage the issuance of that debt. Our credit ratings look at this, and we need to be careful that we're not becoming overly leveraged. In other words, that we're not issuing more bonds that than than what the credit agencies think is reasonable relative to our income, our revenue sources for a AAA and AA+ rated city. We're AAA by Standard and Poor's, AA by AA+ by Moody's and Fitch, and we really want to maintain those credit ratings, and that's going to take some prudent management of our of our issuance of debt in support of this bond program. That's our capital, again, April 26 Audit Finance. We have a much more detailed presentation and and more slides, but all of those slides are in that in that April 26 slide deck. So I think with that, we'll we'll transition to Austin Energy to come up, and I think they have four or five slides to talk about their forecast and some rate scenarios. We'll do the same thing for the water utility, and then you'll have the the full picture. What you've heard so far is about half of your budget. AE and Water are the big enterprise departments, and collectively, they're about the, they're roughly the other half of the budget, that $5 billion budget.
Please come forward. Thank you all.
Thank you. Hey, Mark, you did this at 45 RPM the other day, so let's try to do 78 RPM today. Okay. Good morning, I'm Mark Nemrosky. I'm the Deputy General Manager, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer for Austin Energy. I'm going to present to you our FY '24 through '28 budget. So really, what what we use this forecast for is really, it's to identify trends and future policy compliance using certain assumptions. And so we always begin our forecast with our current year, so we have our budget and what we say is our current year estimate, that's what CYE stands for. So in FY '23, our revenues are pretty much on target with with a few offsets. So our electric revenues are under budget because we had anticipated changing rates on January 1, and we deferred that to March 1. However, we've had more sales in KWH and KW, so this word offset each other. We also deferred adjusting the community benefits charge, which is for our service area lighting that pays for the street lights and the traffic lights here here in the city. And those are offset by increases in regulatory district cooling and forecasted interest, which is a lot higher, and that's because of interest rates that we're earning through our treasury. The operating expenses are slightly over, and that was because of Winter Storm Maura. We spent about $19 million responding to that. That was mostly for mutual aid. We had almost 1,200 people come in from other utilities and contractors to help us respond to that, and we expect to recover 15 million of that. We have that program to receive in FY '25. On the capital side, we're a little behind plan, you'll see, and that's because we were anticipating construction of our Service Operations Center in FY '23, but we've, excuse me, FY '22, we deferred that, and that will take a, we're going to build that in '24 and move in in '25. Some other assumptions we have in here is we've assumed a 1% growth in sales and a 2% growth in customers. And so we're adding lots of new customers, but they're using less and less energy, which is good, but that remain, that means that we don't get as much revenue when we add that. And that's consistent with what we've seen in our historical. We have assumed in this forecast a 5% base rate increase in FY 2026. And we programmed these base rate increases in there to ensure that our forecast stays generally in compliance with our financial metrics, and I'll brief you on those in a little while. So that you'll see those revenues appearing in this fund summary in FY '26. Our forecast increases in debt service, and that's mostly due to system expansion. So you'll see a lot of transmission projects and substations, that's to import more power into Austin as our population grows. And our beginning fund reserves, we we began starting to replenish those fund reserves in FY '24, and in this forecast, we have them fully funded by FY '28. You'll also notice that we've assumed no additional employees or FTEs, full-time equivalents, in this forecast. We normally add about 10 per year, and we really need that to produce the labor to respond to a growing customer class, so distribution lines, customer care folks, engineers. So we'll we'll be looking at that here in the in the next couple of weeks and seeing what offsets we might need to make in order to increase those FTEs. We've talked about vacancies a little bit. Austin Energy has about a 12% vacancy rate on the whole. We assume 10% vacancy in our forecast. So what does that mean? That means that our labor dollars, we we only take 90% of what we need because we assume that's going to be a certain amount of vacancy, and that's due to normal attrition of employees retiring and returning over in that forecast. On the capital side, we have a $1.2 billion five-year capital spend plan, and that's about normal for for Austin Energy, that's that's in the ballpark. And we're going to fund about 52% of this with cash and about 48% with debt, with the idea of getting our debt to capital back down to 50% or less, which is where a good AA-rated utility should be, to keep us being over-leveraged, which you heard Ed talk about a little bit earlier. And you'll see that a lot of the spending really is in transmission. And again, that's to import power into Austin. If you remember, we closed down Decker steam units, one and two, a couple of years ago. So we're not producing electricity here in our load zone, so we need to bring it in from the outside. So that requires transmission projects. We also have substations. Substations are needed to bring, when you bring that transmission power in, to lower it down to a distribution level than than send it out to our neighborhoods. So we have a couple of substation projects as well. And I mentioned that Field Service Center there, that's listed under general there. I would note that district cooling and transmission projects are not recovered in electric utility rates. So we have transmission rates that are set by the Public Utility Commission of Texas, and district cooling, those are set by contracts we have with those individual customers. I would note that we have some uncertainty in our capital spend plan, that's really around transportation projects, things like Project Connect corridor projects. We know they're going to happen, we're not exactly sure when and to what degree and what the funding sources are. So we'll be watching those transportation projects incorporated in into our CIP plans as we get more certainty. As you typically see, we do a bill impact, so this shows what a typical rate payer or customer would pay with that 5% base rate increase, it equals about 2 and 1/2% billing and 1/2%. It equals about 2.5% building increase in 2026. This is our, our normal course of business, where we do these base rates every five, five years or so. And so current bill is about $108.71 a month for inside-city non-cap customers using 860 kilowatt-hours. That increases to $111.40 in '26 with that, that base rate increase. One thing to note here is we have what we call pass-throughs, which is about half the bill. That's the power supply, the regulatory charge, which is what we pay to use the state transmission, and then the community benefits charge. We, we hold those flat throughout the forecast because we recover those dollar-for-dollar each year, and we set those during the budget time, and we don't have a good insight into what those, those may be in, in future years, so we, we hold them flat. So really, what you're seeing here is the impact of just the base rate change. So one of the things that we always look at is our key financial metrics, and that's really what drives us whether we are going to forecast a base rate change. So this chart here presents what those key financial metrics are with a 5% base rate increase in 2026. And you'll see a column there that says minimum target. That's sort of what we're trying to achieve or maintain by changing our base rates. And you'll see where we expect to be in '23. If the number is red, it's below that minimum. If it's black, it's consistent at or above that, that target. So you'll see days' cash on hand is, is, it's below our target. Part of that was our decision to defer the recovery of the power supply adjustment over three years rather than one year. So that took about $100 million to fund that, and sort of, we have an IOU in our cash drawer as we earn that money back on the power supply. And our debt to capital is also in the red. And we, this is done on a deliberate basis. If you'll remember, back in 2019, we had the opportunity to buy the Nacogdoches biomass plant and reduce our customers' costs by $300 million over, over the life of that plant. So we knew that that would increase our debt to capital, but we'd reduce our operating costs for our customers, and so we, we did that. That plant is fully depreciated now, or will be, and then the debt service on that matched the tenor of the power purchase agreement, so that retires in 2032. So that's a significant improvement for our customers. Days' cash on hand struggles to retire, to recover above 150 days, and that's really because our cash grows about 1.4% per year, but our expenses are growing about 1.7%. So as you go out in time, they're growing at different rates, and that creates this diversion. You'll see in FY '27, we do jump up to 151 days, then back down again, and that's because of that, that different growth rate between our revenues or our cash and, and our expenses. Our debt service coverage remains above 2.0, which is a key target that credit agencies look at and our investors. So that means for, for every dollar of debt I have to pay, I have $2 of revenue available to pay for it. So that, that's a good metric. We've also prepared a couple scenarios for you with some, some different assumptions. And so, excuse me, I think I went too far here. So we've prepared a scenario here that assumes what happens starting in '25 if we did a 2% base rate increase each year during budget time? So think of this kind of like your property tax, right? You can increase that 3.5% year without a voter approval. What happens if you did it with that, with utility rates? And the idea is kind of match inflation through time. And also, what it does is prevents what we call a rate shock. Some of you that were during our last rate case, if you wait every five or six years to increase rates, it takes a 5% or 6% increase, and, and customers, you know, rightly, don't, don't like that because it's a big increase in your bill overnight. So the idea is if we increase those rates, base rates, slightly every year to try to match inflation, what does that do to our financial metrics? And so on this chart, it's the same chart as before, but if the, the number is in green, it means it's an improvement over using the five-year assumption, doing it every five years. So you can see that across the board, by the end of this forecast period, we're, we're green, so everything has improved. And I think that you'll see that those two numbers, the revenue growing and cash growing at 1.4%, and expenses growing at 1.7%, that, that gets eliminated here. And so we're slightly improving on margins and growing that, that cash balance, and we're making the utility more healthy. What this doesn't mean, it doesn't mean we don't do a cost of service every five years and still look at base rates. We would still do that. And so what it would mean that if we needed to do adjustment, it would be much more minor adjustment at that five-year. It's also to make sure that we're collecting the costs from the right customers based on how, how they use the, the electric system. So this would be a different policy for you to consider. It's consistent with more like you see on the tax side, but also the Public Utility Commission has what's called a distribution cost recovery factor. And so those regulated utilities like Encore and TXU, they can go in and adjust each year based upon their, their assets, a slight recovery from the customers, and that keeps them up with inflation. So it's a way to improve it. It provides more stability for the revenue for the utility, but also less volatile bills for our customers because they're just mildly increasing each year. And of course, the scenario, what happens if we were to not do any rate increases? And so in this chart, again, the red numbers mean that they're, they're below target, and as you can imagine, through the forecast period of FY '28, it's almost all red. While we still have operating margins above the 10% target, the rest of them are red. This would actually degrade our credit rating. It would increase the amount of debt we have to borrow because we can't use as much cash to fund our, our projects. That debt would, would be more expensive if you have less credit rating, that, that issue debt costs you more. So this would not be a, a good scenario, but it does give you an indication of, of, between this and that 2% base rate, how just a minor adjustment each year will keep you on track, keep you above those metrics, and provide more, more stability for you. So I think it's a, a policy that, that's worth discussing. I'm not going to go through all the metrics. You can see they're red, and I obviously don't, don't advocate for that, but I, we did run and run that scenario for you. And that was really all I have for you. Be glad to answer questions, or if you need time, we can follow up later.
Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you. I appreciate this. I'm going to want to sit with these numbers a little bit. Wanted to clarify, though, your projections here include no acquisitions.
That's correct. We're holding our number of employees constant through the forecast, and we assume a 10% vacancy rate. So we increase our labor costs by, by 10% to adjust for that.
Okay. And do you anticipate needing additional positions?
We will, but I think there's some policy calls about what, you're going to have to make some decisions. You, you have to cease doing something in order to make room for those, those employees, or you have to increase revenues. I think that's kind of a policy call that we haven't had yet.
Okay. How do you do a 2% base rate increase on an annual basis given the rate proceeding process?
All right. So one way to do is put 2% on each the kilowatt-hour in the kilowatt charge, the, the volumetric piece, to, to match that revenue growth. We wouldn't, wouldn't change that, the customer charge, and that would keep it consistent with cost recovery in each class of service that, that we provide. And then when you do your, your, your cost of service study, you would go back and say, well, do we still need to collect that amount of cost from that customer? If not, then you would make the changes in what we call rate design at, at that time.
Okay. At our Austin Energy meeting, I think in two weeks, are you going to provide some data that will help us understand where we're at with respect to the fixes that we implemented vis-à-vis the PSA and getting us on target?
I can. We are. I'm glad to report that. One of the things you'll see in this forecast is our power supply costs projected to decrease slightly over time, and that's because of natural gas. About a year ago, we were seeing gas around, you know, $6 to $9 a decotherm. It's about $1.95 today. So because of gas prices set to ERCOT market price, we're seeing decreases in the power supply, so our power supply is recovering slightly ahead of schedule. So that's helping improve our cash position, and it's going to lower bills for our customers if that stays constant.
Okay. If we could see the numbers for that at our meeting as part of the financial forecast, that would be great. You know, we recently had to raise rates considerably, so if there is good news there, I want to hear it. I think we have to think hard about raising rates again and really understanding that before we contemplate that.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Members, what, what we laid out as a schedule, we, we have a time certain at 11, but I, I don't want us to cut off any discussion that we might have. So when we get to 11 o'clock and we terminate this, this part, this briefing, or we recess this briefing maybe, and we go to the other briefing, I'll ask, and if, if, if the consensus is that we come back, we'll probably still go into the executive session after the other briefing. That'll give everybody a break and lunch and that kind of thing, and then come back if that's, if that's the consensus of the council. So don't feel like if we hit 11 o'clock, this is all done, because I, I think the council needs to have that opportunity. Yes, councilmember.
I see that Mr. Hockenios is here, and I'm wondering if he's able to stay or if we should...
I've got a, I've got a time certain as you say at 3 o'clock.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Good morning. My name is Joseph Gonzalez. I'm Assistant Director of Financial Services for Austin Water, and this morning, I'll be providing a brief overview of our financial forecast for fiscal year '24 through fiscal year '28. And as, as you heard this morning, you know, each department was asked to submit three scenarios. We're, we're no different. For us, you know, we have our, our base cost scenario, assuming, you know, no service enhancements, no new FTEs. We have what we're calling our service enhancement scenario, where, where we do ask for, you know, certain enhancements, including FTEs, and then the, the no-rate increase scenario. Now, as we start our, our forecast process, you know, we, we work through, you know, our, our forecast considerations and budget considerations, you, over the last few years, have focused on, you know, operational and infrastructure resiliency. So, you know, as we think about our, our service enhancement scenario, we would assume, you know, investments in staff retention is recommended by the Austin Water External Review. We would look to add positions to support operations, security, customer engagement, water forward, as well as our, our automated meter infrastructure implementation, and then also look to invest in key infrastructure projects. Throughout the three scenarios, there's, there's no change in our anticipated capital spending plan. Almost the entirety of what we do is, is, is kind of a must-do, so our, our capital spending plan is, is static through, through the three scenarios. And as, as we work through our forecast, you know, we, we look to maintain our financial strength and, and stability as we went through the, the drought of record from really 2008 to 2011, with a couple of wet years in, in between. You know, our, our financial condition was kind of bottomed out in 2014. We had negative water cash. So since then, and, and at that time, we were placed on a negative credit watch by a couple of our rating agencies. Since that time, we've worked to stabilize our finances. We've, we've worked really hard on debt management strategies, really kind of a three, three-pronged effort. We've, we've worked to defees debt or pay off debt early, kind of like sending in extra mortgage or, or car loan payments. We've worked to refinance debt where possible, again, similar to refinancing your home mortgage when rates were lower, at lower interest rates. And, and then we've utilized Texas Water Development, Texas Water Development Board low-interest loans over the last several years to, to finance, you know, several of our projects at, some of them at zero to, to like 0.25% interest. So, so really big savings for, for our customers. And looking forward, you know, we, we're looking to balance affordability with, with increasing cost drivers. We're facing the same impacts that, that all other departments, the city as a whole is, is facing. But I do want to remind everybody that we, our, our last rate action was a 4.8% retail rate reduction in 2018. Since then, we haven't had a rate increase from, from 19 through, through 2023. And then as we look at our, our forecast scenarios, our, our base scenario anticipates about a 4.4% average annual rate increase over the forecast period, while our, our recommended or enhanced scenario ticks up to about 5% over the, the forecast period. And there's not a big delta there because operations, our own end costs, aren't really as, as much of a factor as, as our debt service and, and capital spending plan is, and I'll go through some of that in more detail here shortly. This is our, our base forecast, assuming, again, a 4.4% average annual rate increase over the forecast period. This forecast maintains strong financial metrics, but also maintains staffing levels at, at the current level of 1,361 FTEs. And, and, you know, as a reminder, that, you know, this is our baseline scenario, so it doesn't include, you know, funding for, for, for new FTEs or, you know, staff, including funding positions that were recommended in, you know, our, our external review. In, in terms of revenues, we're projecting about 1.5% annual customer growth in addition to the, the 4.4% average annual rate increases over the period. And over the period, you know, we expect to see increases in, in our debt service cost, although we're, we're able to mitigate a lot of those through our debt management efforts. But as our capital spending plan grows, so do our contributions, and, and, you know, I'll show you when we get to the financial metric slide, but, but our contributions to cash fund some of those capital programs. And, and those two areas, debt service and cash funding, a portion of our, our capital spending plan are, are the two big cost drivers over, over the forecast period. For our, our capital spending plan, you know, we've got, you know, significant critical investments in, in, in infrastructure, and this is a, a brief list of, of some of those highlights. In, in total, the five-year spending plan will total almost $1.9 billion. Now, that's a, a $528 million increase over our current FY '23 through '27 five-year spending plan, and, and that's, you know, a combination of two things. We're seeing significant increases in terms of construction costs, both for materials and labor, but really, it's more about the, the timing of our projects and several of our strategic projects moving into our, our five-year CIP plan. So if you look at just the top five projects, Walnut Creek wastewater treatment pack, plant expansion, South Austin Regional trains A and B improvements, the aquifer storage and recovery, Williamson Creek wastewater interceptor, and our Center Street pump station and electrical improvements. Those five projects account for $432 million of the $528 million increase. So that's just the projects moving further along in, in terms of the construction timeline. If there are any other projects you wanted to highlight. All right. You know, in terms of debt service, I mentioned, we've been working hard to, to reduce and stabilize our, our debt service cost, and this, this chart has a lot going on to it, but the, the, the blue bars show our, our current actual levels of, actual and projected levels of, of debt service, you, based on our, our capital spending plan. The, the green shaded areas at the top represent the savings that have already occurred or the incremental savings that we, you know, will need to, to reduce debt service by to, to again, you know, stabilize and, and reduce our debt service cost over time. You can see that, you know, since 2016, we've reduced actual debt service savings by almost $500 million, and, and we anticipate just through additional debt defeesance transactions, again, paying, paying off debt early, making extra debt payments, an additional $213 million over, over the forecast period. And that's going to be really important in the, in the out years. You know, those, those green shaded bars show what our debt service would be but for those debt management efforts. And the other, the other thing I want to point out on this chart is the, the green line that shows debt service as a percent... service as a percentage of our total budget. And since, again, since 2016, through our debt management efforts, we've pulled down debt service as a percentage of our total budget from 35% down below 25%. And we think we can continue to do that over the forecast period even with the increases that we would expect to see in debt service resulting from, you know, our growing capital spending plan. Now, these are key metrics under a base scenario. Again, no new FTEs, no service enhancements. And, you know, in terms of our key financial metrics, the three at the bottom are our financial policy metrics. They're key financial metrics that the rating agencies look at. But, you know, for days' cash on hand under this scenario, since we're not adding, you know, any O&amp;M operational increases, we maintain strong levels of, we maintain strong levels of days' cash. In fact, days' cash goes from the current estimate of 309 days up to 314 days, so stays relatively stable. Same thing with debt service coverage. For us, our financial policy is 1.75 times coverage. And so that means for every dollar of debt service, you know, we need $1.75, you know, $1.75 of revenues to cover debt service coverage after we pay for operating expenses. And so you can see throughout the forecast period, we stay above those financial policy levels. Now, the last metric, the cash financing percentage of CIP, our financial policy target is between 35 and 50%, but during periods of rapidly expansion, rapidly increasing capital spending, we're comfortable and our rating agencies, you know, are comfortable with pulling back to a minimum of 30% as we try and balance, you know, fund cash funding a certain portion of our CIP with affordability. You know, we really focus on affordability in terms of our long-term planning efforts and that's an area where we feel like we, you know, we can make a concession. And so although it's red here, it's still an area that we feel comfortable with. And then also point out, you know, the fund balance change for fiscal year '24, we'd anticipate spending down a little bit of fund balance. Recall that last year, fiscal year 2022, was a hot and dry year. So we had some anticipated revenues above our expectations due to the increased demand over the hot and dry summer.
Let me ask you, is this the last slide or are you close?
Just about. Yes, we're close. I'll go through it real quickly. This is our enhancement scenario. Again, same thing with cash financing and CIP percentage. We're comfortable with maintaining 30%. We've got, again, deficit in fiscal year '24, slightly larger due to the incremental service enhancements, but it's something that we're comfortable with. And then through the last four years of the forecast period, essentially break even if you add up the fund balance change for the last four years. And then under a no-rate increase scenario, much like Austin Energy, you see a whole lot more red. You know, under this scenario with our capital spending plan, you know, it would have, you know, negative financial impacts on our financial condition. And then I'll close with a rate forecast impact. And we went back a little bit further because I wanted to show the impact of the drought of record, you know, from 2011 to 2015. You can see that in the first year, average residential consumption was just below 8,000 gallons a month. And as it dropped, that's represented by the green line, as it dropped over time and stabilized to around 5,800, you know, we had rate increases really just to balance revenues with actual levels of demand. Since then, our demand has stabilized, and that's a big part of that with our debt management efforts of why we've been able to maintain no rate increases. But you can see in the out-years, you know, rate increases will be necessary to support our growing CIP spending plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Members, if anybody has a couple of quick questions, we can do that now. But what my suggestion would be is that we have the 11 o'clock time certain. We finish that, we go into executive session, and we ask Mr. Hockenios so that we can allow him to manage his time to be here at 1:30. And that way, we'll set a time certain for you so that you can manage your time and not, because we do want to hear from you. Councilmember Poole.
Quick question on your slide three. The last little blue water drop says, "Does not fund staffing for recommended resiliency efforts." Could you expand a little bit on that? Tell us what we're missing by not doing that?
Sure. Again, this is the baseline scenario, so it doesn't add any new FTEs. So you recall that the external review recommended several, you know, adding several positions, including, you know, operations positions, emergency management, you know, customer service. I'm not sure if I'm getting them all.
So then, thank you for that. So then, do you show that staffing being accommodated in the other scenarios?
In the enhanced scenario, we anticipate, you know, 20 new FTEs for fiscal year '24, in part in response to the external review, but a few other key areas that, you know, we feel are important.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything else before we take a break? And we'll be back because I'm sure the council's going to have some additional questions. All right? Thank you all. Members, we're going to go to the 11 o'clock time certain. We're going to need to get folks into the room. So as they come in, I guess we can also, would people like to take, say, a five-minute recess to run to the restroom and then come back? Then, without objection, we're recessed until 11:10. I know that's more than five minutes, but y'all look eager. It's a, I'll call back to order the Austin City Council after a brief recess. It is 11:10 a.m.